All right, I will call to order a special meeting of the Wellington Board of Selectmen. It's a budget workshop meeting Monday, January 23rd at 5:30 PM. I don't know if all members are present, present to speak. If you are in the room or on the line and you'd like to speak, raise your hand, identify yourself for the record, and limit yourself to two minutes. Is there anyone present to speak? Going once, one, twice. All right. Next item, appointment to school building committee. On Thursday, the Board of Finance filled their vacancy and appointed James Marshall to the Board of Finance. And then during the course of that meeting, recommended that Mr. Marshall be the Board of Finance member representative to the school building committee. So I will make a motion that we can have discussion. I see Mr. Marshall on this call. So I'm going to move to appoint James Marshall as the Board of Finance member representative as a regular member of the school building committee effective immediately, expiring once the charge of the committee has been completed. Second, so typically this is the point in the meeting where we would allow anyone to speak. If Mr. Marshall so chooses, it's important to note that the seat that is vacant currently was left vacant. As Mike was no longer a member of the Board of Finance, so he resigned that seat. And then he was appointed to fill a different seat, so that left one from the Board of Finance. Their committee, I don't remember if it was unanimous, there might have been an abstention in that, but the remainder of members voted to have Mr. Marshall represent the Board of Finance for sake of discussion because neither of you, I don't know if either of you were on the call, I don't believe so, but I couldn't see everyone on the screen, if you'd like to hear from Mr. Marshall.
Sure, sure. If anybody wants to speak, cause of the time.
Sure. Jim, do you want to share maybe a little bit of the background that you shared with the Board of Finance that they felt made you an ideal candidate to the school building committee?
Yeah, certainly. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Apologize for not being able to be there in person tonight. So, but thank you for the remote option. Yes, so I shared basically, you know, some of you have gotten to know me a little bit over the recent years, but I have been engaged actively in trying to assist the town or be involved in the town in any way that, you know, I thought my relevant experience would be beneficial. You know, I was active on planning and zoning via application recently. And I've been following along with the school building committee since, for a very long while now. I am, my background is, I'm an architect. I have a focus, or my office has a focus in K through 12 construction, or design rather. I am familiar, you know, with the process for pursuing state grant funding. Familiar with the process for K through eight consolidation through school design. I also have a significant amount of experience with building assessment and helping municipalities generate capital improvement plans and, you know, long-term improvement strategies for various facilities in their jurisdictions. So I relayed a lot of that background information to the Board of Finance, following their decision to appoint me. I know I've been following along very actively and I believe I'm, as far as a member of the public goes, I'm about as read in. You know, familiar with what's been going on at the, with the school building committee and that process as a member of the public I feel can be. And I think my background, you know, and that understanding would go a long way. And I relayed this to the Board of Finance as well in, in being able to hit the ground running and really jump into what is a relatively critical juncture in the school building committee's, you know, process. So I appreciate the consideration. I hope to, you know, be able to be of service and share what knowledge and insight I may have based on my professional experience. And if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to, happy to talk further. Let me know. But thank you again.
Thank you. I will just say it would be, from my perspective, very unusual for me to not move forward the appointment based on the recommendation of the board. Having been at that meeting, no other member of the Board of Finance spoke as to wanting to represent the board on the school building committee. They did have a regular member absent, but of the other remaining members and their alternates. This was their choice, and I think it's important that the Board of Finance absolutely needs to have a seat at the table. And Mr. Marshall's experience in this world certainly could lead to the committee as the process moves forward. Again, if there is a positive referendum, I think he can be a vital asset to making sure that the town is well representative, represented throughout the building process, potential building and renovation process. Mike?
Just want to go into order. We're on public to speak, yes?
No, we're not. We moved past public to speak and onto the appointment. And there's a motion on the table.
Yep, very good. Thank you for clarifying. So, you know, is this all was happening? A lot has happened over the last few months with me leaving Board of Finance, changing roles to here, becoming chairman in the school building committee. And and there's a lot of stuff going on with the school building committee. So there's just a lot, there are a lot of moving pieces right now. And so I was thinking it through and I was thinking, you know, what is the, what kind of position would we be putting Mr. Marshall in by him becoming a brand new member of the Board of Finance and then immediately representing the Board of Finance on the committee? And it's very fast paced, but then as I thought through it, I remembered five years ago when I was elected to the Board of Finance, basically at my first meeting, I had a vote at my very first meeting and could participate in making decisions about the town's finances. So I guess it's incumbent upon anyone new to a position to handle that startup carefully and, and recognize it. And we have to realize that that is how the process works. Once you become a member, you have a vote. The other thing is the, the representative of the Board of Finance is not necessarily making decisions on the school building committee in place of the Board of Finance. They're a conduit of information back and forth between the Board of Finance or whatever group they represent. So having thought through that, I do feel a little more comfortable with it. As far as Mr. Marshall's resume, I feel very comfortable with that. He's been participating in town stuff. He's been involved in these. He does have experience related in, he has experience in Connecticut, Massachusetts, and Rhode Island, I believe, in school design. So should the taxpayers decide to move forward, and that's another thing, he's not going to decide to spend taxpayer money. He's, he's going to participate potentially in recommendations to the taxpayers. Sorry. It's a fire call, sorry. So, you know, his, should there be a positive referendum, then his value on the school building committee becomes even greater because of his design experience and school experience. So I think as much as this feels like it's moving fast, I think this is the right thing to do.
Jim?
Mike, I shared some of the same concerns and struggles that you had. I think in terms of experience with his architectural background and all that, I think he's a, it's a no brainer on that end of it. I only wish he was available for the committee earlier. I think he probably would have arrived at the spot where you are now probably a lot sooner. The only thing I struggle with is the same thing you are. Yeah, I'm glad he stepped forward. I'm glad he stepped forward to join the Board of Finance. He's joined, he's been very active on a lot of different issues in committees in the town, but I really wish the Board of Finance put somebody in it with just a little bit of experience. Even an alternate, I think would have been preferable. And that's, that's my major concern with the whole thing. That's all, which is, it's a concern. Concern with me, there's a lot of moving pieces, not only the school building committee, but the town budget, the town capital. There's a lot of demands on the town. We just saw, we're all aware that the roads have been a huge issue. There's going to be a ton of capital coming out and supporting that. We know there's a bunch of buildings that require various capital improvements. And even though there's a long list of CIP programs, not everything is worthy to be prioritized and funded. There's a reason why he's supposed to go through and prioritize. So as you said, it's a, it's a, there's a lot of moving pieces and all that. And I just, I wish the Board of Finance just picked somebody who had a little bit more experience than the new guy they put right on there. That's my comments. Otherwise personally, I think he's a great volunteer.
Background is clearly suited.
I'm glad he's volunteering for a lot of different things and participating.
And I appreciate that. I will say that, and I said this at Board of Finance, a little bit of living in a vacuum during that meeting, forgetting that we have budget meetings between that meeting and our next regular meeting, anticipating that this would come up to our next regular meeting. So I would just say to Mr. Marshall, yes, once you're appointed, you absolutely get a vote like any other member, but to, you know, consider all options as you move forward and the participation in, in, in the committee and make what you feel is the best call is, again, you will be called on to make votes, participated votes immediately upon becoming a member. And so I'd ask you certainly to think about the process and your role in it as you move forward. But to me, again, the Board of Finance sent us their candidate and having sat through that meeting, there were no other members that stepped forward. So it's not as though, you know, if there was someone else who wanted to, they certainly didn't express it then. So it's, as far as I'm concerned, you know, acting on behalf of that board and accepting that from them. So unless there's any further discussion, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion to appoint Jim Marshall to the school building committee signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
All right. Kelsey, can I ask her roll call vote?
Jim?
Nay, for the reasons. Then aye.
Erica?
Aye. Motion carries. All right, thank you. So now we'll get on to the budget. I had had hopes of having our full budget complete. Donna is still in the process. I think it's no surprise to anyone, there are many things happening at the same time. And I've mentioned to you all before that we are, Donna is still working on the audit recording that needs to be done. So you have a copy of the budget in front of you. There are still many items to be filled in. Those that are in blue are not part of the Board of Selectmen budget. They are part of what you're used to seeing.
Formulating.
Dot, dot, dot. They are part of the general government budget, but not the Board of Selectmen budget. So if, if, if I turn your eyes to the last page, this is not a complete number, but you'll see Board of Selectmen and you'll see currently, before we do any work on this, a 9.55% increase. There are so many things to be filled in, and that does include that large number that we're starting off with to add to roads. So that's probably going to be our biggest consideration. For comparison's sake, just before we sat down here, I took out that large increase to our road infrastructure, and it brings that number to a negative eight percent. So you can see what, almost $800,000 increase will due to the budget. So I think there's no doubt that will be our largest discussion point. And our anticipation, and Donna correctly is wrong, is that for Monday's next budget workshop, that we should have a more complete picture of our budget. So I will let Donna.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? So I think you already said, but just to be sure, the 9.55% is, excludes any blue general government?
That is correct.
Okay, just verifying. Thank you.
Yeah, like the Board of Assessment Appeals, the Board of Finance.
More clarifying questions. If blue is general government, what's the, actually like a pink or something?
Donna and I working in.
Anything not, anything not blue is us.
Yeah. Yeah, Donna and I, we have a shared document, so she's working us in the first.
My numbers that I have verified and have backup for, I'm filling it with that rose color. So I know what I.
That's your confirmed, confirmed color.
Yes. Erica, I filled in the others from budgets from the departments.
Yes. All right. I do not mind getting a pencil. Kelsey's got a pencil right there. Oh, he wants a pencil.
Office is open.
Thank you.
All right, let's give Mike a minute to take a jog to get a pencil. Usually bring two, I did not.
Always bring two. I've run out.
It's been a day. Not yet. And in your budget book, you have some information that's come to us from different departments and some backups. As we go through, there might be references in there, and we will fill that in as we go. Okay, Donna.
Okay, starting on page 11. And I.
It's the last page.
Fill in the region 19 budget request, which is the forecast from last year's budget book, the forecast for this year. So.
Yeah, because we're still early to have the approved number.
They usually have a working number from the superintendent, so I did put in a call to see if we can get that number, but haven't received anything yet. So what Donna typically starts with is what they used last year. So I hope that it stays, because you can see it's our year too.
Yes.
I'll be on the downside.
It is in favor of Wellington for 2324. Okay. Okay, I'm going to work up from the bottom for you. But this category is the transfers out. So these are fund transfers from the selectmen's budget to the other departments. So the first one is human services, and that's the number from Jenny Arpin, which she will present to the Board of Finance, her total budget revenue and expense. Okay, the transfer out to the housing authority covers the board secretary and the directors and officers insurance. The transfer out to the capital reserve is from the approved CIP plan year two. The transfer out to the handy have fund is flat, a flat number from last year. Okay, there are no transfers out to capital projects in the CIP, so that's zero.
And I anticipate just two things in there. The increase in human services, the bulk increase into the new senior center coordinator position. All of the work at the senior center, they are a member of the human services staff. We recall Jim from being on this side of the table and Mike from Board of Finance. That was paid for with ARPA funds in this current fiscal year.
So what we're seeing here is the pickup into the regular budget after ARPA.
Yes.
Yes, Jim and I both spent a lot of times in these boxes and squares here.
I'm on page 10, and I'm at the bottom, capital expenditures, 930, 245,074 dollars. That's from CIP, approved CIP year two.
And of course, we are well aware that CIP will potentially be bringing less than the numbers.
Yes, and so that would affect both the capital reserve pay, transfer out that Donna mentioned and this one. So the numbers she took were from the plan, as we know it.
Yeah, it's a good, good start.
Yeah. Thank you, Jim. Okay, now I'm on the debt services category. Okay, so that is the bond payment for the library, the principal, level principal, 150,000. The interest is 21,000. The lease payment, the ACO, which is animal control officer, lease vehicle, that lease is paid for. So the only thing in this category that's being leased is self-contained breathing apparatus. And this is the last year for that lease. Okay. Miscellaneous standard $2,000 budget request. Now I'm on the insurance category. For workers comp and lab, we have, we are in year two of a three-year rate stabilization, which is that the premium increase will not exceed 3%, not including exposure. So workers comp, that really is a 3% because last year's budget is overstated. The actual is what it really is. So if you do your percent increase of 30,198 to 31,136, that's 3%. The lab insurance is a 3% increase. This includes lab, crime, and cyber insurance. The budget for cyber insurance is $15,000 in the Board of A budget and $15,000 in the town, which is an increase over last year.
What is lab again?
Lab is liability, area, and property.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Is everybody good on the insurance category? Okay, the pension funding category. Okay, the pension funding, $24,290. That is what is called the ARC, A R C, annual required contribution. That is a number from the pension valuation, and it's the recommended number that we fund our pension, our defined pension plan.
Usually a handful of people in this claim, like three, is it three?
Two people, two employees in the defined benefit. So the admin fees above that, 4,880, that is the cost for the pension valuation. So United Retirement takes care of the valuation. And that's what we pay them to do that for us. Simple IRA match is for those employees who are not participants of the defined benefit. They may contribute 3% of their salary, and the town matches 3%. So the people that are participating, the 24,000 represents 3% of their, now their match. They pay three and the town puts three, fraction three, they can't pull less.
That represents all the 3% put together for all the.
Yeah, all the 3% put together. Not everybody participates. This just represents the people who do.
Right, and that giant aggregate is increasing 2.7%?
Yes, because I trued it out. You know, I started from ground zero and who's in it right now? Yeah. Okay, the pension insurance. So the two employees that are in the defined benefit, they have an insurance premium on their pension. And this represents that premium. It's a life insurance premium. Retirement benefit for SBO, SBO is school business official. That is 3% of my salary that the town puts into a simple IRA account for me. Okay, do anybody have any questions on page 10? Okay, then page nine.
Can I just make, no, we don't, you don't see that health insurance numbers in here, but just for your information purposes, we're looking at a 7.5% increase in medical and 3% not to exceed in dental and life insurance.
Life will be flat. We're on a two-year rate guarantee, so it's our second year. So no premium increase for life.
And the dental's 3% not to exceed, so that is not a finalized number yet, but the 7.5 is.
Okay, unemployment is $1,000.
I need to, I'm still stuck on page 10 there. It says all the insurances, they're all down to zero. Did they use it?
No, she hasn't. She hasn't gotten it yet. But when, when you do, these are the assumptions that we have locked in at 7.5 for medical, and there will be a 3% not to exceed, several will be using.
So Donna, a question on the unemployment.
Yes. Yes, tonight.
This, this $1,000 can't be the only thing we're paying on unemployment. Are we self-insured or how?
We are not self-insured.
Okay.
We are. Are we fully insured? I don't know. We're not self-insured.
So, okay, so we're paying, we're only paying $1,000 for unemployment insurance?
We, we only pay if we have, someone we don't have.
So, okay, so we're not paying on an experience rate or anything like that. We're paying on an actual loss rate or whatever they call that.
When we get a claim.
An actual claim rate or whatever it's called, yeah.
An actual claim, we pay it.
Yeah, okay, so we pay the claim directly. Okay, so this, this $1,000 is basically just sort of administering the plan or something?
No, it's the actual payment. So you can see in 21, 22, we paid $1.
Oh, so that was, that is an act, so that $1,000 is an actual claim.
No, it's an.
Something in place, right. It's in place for an actual claim, I'm sorry.
It's in place for an actual claim, yes.
Okay.
It's, yeah, that's right. It's larger than for, for actual claims.
Understood, okay.
Yeah.
If we knew, we were anticipating a claim, we would have a number in there. There was, a couple of years ago, we knew we were anticipating one, so we had bumped it from 1,000 to 8,000. And then we had a whopping $1 in 21, 22. In 2021, we had several, because we received several claims that came as a result of COVID layoffs and unemployment claims, minimal amount, but we don't anticipate anything.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay, social security is 7.65% of the wages. Okay, transfer station. All I can speak to on that are the wages, so the transfer station operator and the assistant.
We, you can still see there's a electricity will need to be filled in there, but overall, we're looking at close to a 2% increase. I say close to because I don't know what that electricity number will be based on.
Yeah, so electricity, the town and Board of A combined have a contract. So we have a locked-in rate per kilowatt hour, like eight cents, something like that. But what, but I will go back and review and make sure that the assumption for the kilowatts is right. And, you know, there's two pieces to an electric bill, supply and demand. Right, so we know the price of the supply per kilowatt hour, we have a contract. But the demand, I don't know. I have to, you know, just look and make sure I have enough to cover both pieces. So I'll do a review of the electricity.
And then the.
Of all the accounts.
Yeah, the other increases you are seeing are a result of the trash removal. That's a result of our increase in contract and then using a five-year average. Troy's actually done some work to take a look at both the bulk and the trash. If you recall, we had some that were happy with us and some that were not so happy when we did a crackdown on usage of the transfer station this summer. And Troy can speak to us about the numbers they have. Our numbers have dropped significantly since we increased.
Make sure that only Wellington people are using it.
You betcha.
You mean garbage ton of.
Yeah, so basically we see 80 tons of bulky, and it doesn't sound like a lot, but it is with the old trips and stuff. So that was an average saving of about $7,000 in cost, and it was around $2,000 or $4,000, sorry, and actually hauls being pulled out. So that, ever since we've done the crackdown on the bulk.
So just in this time, you've already saved like $11,000?
Over last year. So how much of that is a result of crackdown? How much is a result of, how much more can we have to clean out our houses while we're working from home? Remains to be seen, but we know that at one point, you know, in one weekend, they had turned away about 20 individuals. And some had said they've been repeat, done. individuals, and some had said they've been repeat, um, dumping at the transfer station. So a lot of that concern and the concern in these increasing numbers was what led me, um, to work with Troy and say we need to, we need to really up our enforcement and, um, make sure that our transfer station staff was, um, was actually checking permits.
And marking off your bulk.
Absolutely.
Which they're much, they're very diligent about now, and which I'm fine with. I have my card, my wallet, it gets marked off.
Yeah, so some of these numbers were adjusted, um, based on, on some of that, so I think they're a little bit more true.
Hey Troy, what's this waste oil antifreeze thing taking off?
That's, uh, so we burn the waste oil in our furnace, but when somebody brings up like antifreeze, it goes into a container, we can't take that, so we have to have that pumped out. Like a hazardous waste company comes in and pumps it away and takes it away, so that's one.
They can't take, uh, so what?
So like if someone brings up, you know, five gallons of antifreeze or old gas or something like that, it goes into a special container and then we have to dispose of it.
Okay, so that's something that's not antifreeze or waste.
Or waste oil, exactly, yeah, the regular waste oil. If you were to change oil in your car and bring it up, we would take that and we use it in our, um, burner system to heat the garage.
And you want people to just leave it in the bottles that they purchased it in or something like?
Yeah, usually they check with the attendant and bring it back and then we dump it into a special container and then.
Okay, now I just wondered why, why, what's taking off here? It's, it's all that other stuff, the old, the old gas or whatever you got.
Gas, and there's some people, some old oil that's real, real bad and sludgy that we can't burn that in, so then it gets stopped.
Okay, we don't charge for that, correct?
All right. Back to Donna. Cemetery Association is budgeted to receive the standard is two thousand dollar contribution. Okay, on page eight. I entered the lease payments for the EPW equipment and the, um, lease interest payments. And there is, see there's a little bit of an increase. There is one new addition to the list of lease payments. That is a freight line of truck and that truck is, is the one that we are, we are lease financing a hundred and twenty-five thousand and a hundred thousand is coming from capital reserve when it comes time to, um, finalize the transaction on the truck. So this is the lease payment on the one hundred and twenty-five thousand. So that's new to the schedule we share.
And Troy, I think you were expecting that, uh, this coming?
Yeah, April or May.
April or May, yeah, yeah, okay.
And you can see the electricity and then the fuel, um, numbers. Still, um, need, need to be worked out. And the fuel, we're looking at two. If I left that. Do you remember where they're at? You haven't. I grabbed it wrong, no, Pat. Um, we're using an assumption that is more than this year. Or we will be, as you said, you don't see. Well, Kelsey looks at that, the, um, just to hear the general wage increase we're looking at. Um, we follow the CBA for all staff is two point seven five percent. So that will be the number you'll see worked in. And if it's less for some, it may be where they, um, are on steps. So it's a, there's a step and a two point five percent general.
So diesel fuel is three dollars and twenty-seven cents and home heating is three dollars and eighteen cents? Thank you.
You have that locked in. Those are, um, the numbers that we're using, so. Right, and you can see the rest of public works, um, Donna put in the salaries. You see that large number under, uh, road maintenance that adds, uh, seven hundred and eleven, almost seven hundred and twelve thousand. And then for the snow, uh, removal contractor, that is based on a hundred and eighty-nine, um, average hours. And, um, we budgeted on a hundred and eighty dollars an hour, but that will go out to bid, so. Remains to be seen what we will get. Um, from that, we budgeted for one contractor. And that's why I see the thirty-four oh two oh. That is page eight, you see the snow section on the bottom, ah, yeah, that's okay.
I jumped.
The road maintenance is at the top of page nine, bottom of page eight, you see the snow, um, increases there. And knock on wood, you know, we're under this year, we just kind of know.
She just set a course for the next six weeks.
Yeah, I'm just gonna say, just ruined it now.
I knocked on something, like, yeah. All right, building department, um, working with, uh, Jim Rupert, who's our current building official on, um, getting those numbers. It looks like, um, the conversation we had just prior to this meeting, the building permit support number may come down just a little bit, which would be nice, everything tends to go up. And I would anticipate his purchase service, um, will be about a three percent increase that, uh, would follow the contract in Bolton. So I can hope to have that with you. And the fire hydrants and mains, Donna, do you, that's been stagnant for, uh, several years?
We've had plenty of budget money in the past years.
All right. Senior Center, we have not received their budget.
I know that the treasurer at the senior center, Joe Pytech, is working on it with N A. Yeah, so I'm expecting something from them.
Right, I left the consulting engineers flat. A ten thousand a piece. Old Town Hall, um, again, left the maintenance line item flat. Um, or I will leave it, that's, you're gonna see that number increase. You see, so far we've spent four hundred and ninety-three in this year. Um, as of that date, we spent a, additional funds. Sure, I don't remember the final amount, uh, because we had to have the new, uh, panel put in on the green. So they changed the poll, EverSource changed the poll and Outliner Service, so we had to bring in all new. And so we paid for some of that out of last year and the remainder of this year. So, on the, on the date, Donna, um, did these adjustments, it wasn't there, but we certainly spent some, so I'd leave the two thousand dollars. We, um, with an old building that age, um, I think it's in our best interest.
How soon are we, I know it's a different budget, but how soon are we thinking we're gonna see the subjects as come there?
I hope.
Probably the springtime.
Oh, the spring?
They did the survey on it, so Carl just needs to do the engineering and then, basically it's go out to bid.
Yeah, he was finalizing the, uh, the RFP to put that out. So, yeah, if they can do, if, if the work can get done by a contractor in the spring, then I think we should start to see that. The town office, um, I'll hit some highlights. There's still some final numbers to fit in here, computer expense being our largest in this line item. We are anticipating a budget for an eight percent increase in our, um, I T services.
All right, this, uh, two hundred thousand dollar drop is good.
It's good, we can just leave it just like that. It's gonna go. And, uh, maintenance, maintenance, our maintenance and miscellaneous. Um, it was nineteen thousand this year, we've add, we added some funds to do some work on the air conditioning in the vault. So taking, um, those dollars out, you can bring that down to fourteen thousand, so we see a little bit of a drop in that number. Um, custodial services, you'll see an increase there. I, I've added for, um, a potential increase will go out to bid on custodial services. We have a two-year contract and it expires on June thirty. So, um, we will be, uh, sending out those bids shortly. And knowing what, um, our custodians along with some other contractors had asked us to increase in our current contracts, I would anticipate, um, an increase, um, close to this. There is some contingency funding in that line item, so I think a thousand dollars ought to be able to cover. But we will, we will adjust once we have, once we know. And then we, uh, we're working on, on adjusting final posted, um, estimates based on the number of items we send and yet again, more posted increases. So, ever changing. And then you can just skip a whole page to page three. The town clerk. It's on with us. You can see Donna has filled in that salaries. Again, um, there's a two point seven five, um, annual increase, there are step increases, and that comes into play, I think, in the assistance line item. I'm correct if I'm wrong, Donna, first includes a step, does it?
Yes, and Robbins includes an increase for certification.
Yes, so a contracted increase, uh, for Robin was a two percent when she receives her certification and she anticipates that happening, um, in June of this year. So it would be in effect for next fiscal year. So that's why you see a five point seven percent increase. It is simply all contractual. And then the other large increase for Robin, Robin is at purchase services. Um, that's twofold, the contract we use for our land, uh, record hosting expires in, uh, the September and they'll enter into a new contract, she's reached out, um, looking for costs. And, um, so she's put a placeholder in for an additional, uh, three thousand dollars there. And the remaining increase would be towards a grant or grantee index. It's something that has not been done since twenty eighteen. Um, last year, Robin had asked for that increase and then, um, took it out in order to bring the budget back down. Uh, but feels it is, um, necessary to do. Town council, I left those dollars flat. I never, uh, hoped that we need them, but when you know, you know. Revenue collector salary, Janice is on with us. Speak to that, so this increase, if you recall, um, last year, again, Mike from Board of Finance, Janice had asked for an increase, we were, um, discussing starting to make some headway in our salaries overall. And the, um, decrease in budget to that particular department actually left Janice with no additional increase. So I know the Board of Finance was trying to meet somewhere in the middle and, um, account for a small increase. The, um, increase that was given on paper was strictly the, um, increase that was per CBA and then the contractual increases that were already in place, um, per her contract. So Janice is now a certified municipal collector. Um, so while we thought we were making headway last week, or last year we were hoping to, there was actually none. So you can see Janice is, um, added in, uh, an increase that would bring the salary from forty-five, eight ninety-five to fifty-three, one twenty-four um, this year, so certainly, uh, food for thought. The revenue collector salary is based on, that, um, is currently a vacant position, but it's based on, the assistant, sorry, is based on forty-five weeks at eighteen hours a week, that's a normal schedule. And then seven weeks at twenty-eight hours, that would cover busy tax season and then, um, vacation time for, um, the revenue collector.
So I have a, I have a question.
Yes, and so it's lowered simply because we're going back, we're dropping it from step one, so the individual that was in that space was a higher step.
Gotcha.
So the, um, change in personnel and beginning of step one would allow for the decrease.
Okay, so, um, remembering very well the conversations last year about Janice's salary.
Yes.
And you were talking, as you were describing there, about the, um, what she ended up with in that budget was being able to just meet the contractual obligations. So when you have an employee in this situation who has a contractual pay scale and whatever raises and all that, I'm not familiar to, with a situation where you can then also insert raises. You know, because the, because the contract would say if you have this certification or this year's of service or you meet this step or we negotiate a percentage for a coal, all those things factor in. Um, but I'm assuming what you're saying is there is a methodology allowed in this contract to simply raise someone's salary.
So let me correct what I said, we give them the two point seven, we pass on the same two point seven five that's for the CBA. Her contract, her contract, um, uh, similar to Robbins, was contractual increases based upon their certification. So Janice had some until she got to her certification and then the rest is based on, um, what we, what we, um, provide as a whole.
So she's not covered by the CBA?
No.
Okay, that's, that's what was thrown.
Right, our department heads are not, but we have used, we are, um, past practice has been.
Sure, but to follow.
To follow, so in this budget, um, typically all you would see was a two point seven five. Um, she has put in a request for more.
Yep.
Um, to bring that in line, and I believe in your budget books, you will also have correct, because they got the same data. Um, you'll see, uh, salary comparison from, um, like towns to Wellington, um, and their tax collector and salary, um, and giving you an idea of the number of hours that they work.
So the fifteen point eight percent is comprised of a couple of different things. It's comprised of the, uh, typical two point seven five that follows the CBA, right? That's part of it. And then is there, is part of that fifteen point eight also her certification increase?
Yes, she, no, that, she got that this year, so she's currently.
She has the certification bump already, it's the existing salary. Okay, so the other maybe thirteen percent here, trying to level up.
Yes.
The salary. Compared partly to that salary study.
Yes, she requested an increase over the two point seven. Yeah, and then, uh, again, when we talk about the town clerks, that's a one-time increase at certification.
Yeah.
Um, and then there are some increases in fees, the Lexus Nexus, um, has gone up. We split some of that with the assessor, if you see that increase here, some D M Bs, um, D M B Bs have gone up. Um, the office supply has decreased, um, we purchased new scanners last year and we don't need the same, um, really need one this year. We had one from last year. And, um, education and training, the, um, increase in that is for planning, um, for a new hire with no experience. There is an incredible benefit to them, um, uh, receiving some training in municipal collecting. All right, and just the page two. And the assessors department, I see Nicole and I don't know if Kara is in. So if you recall, we shared this position with Bolton, um, and we split the cost of the employee plus benefits. So you will see in your packet, Bolton has given us their, um, projected salary for, um, the fiscal year. And that would make our half of the salary in benefits, fifty-seven, seven eighty-eight. So it's actually a decrease from this year. Which I'm, I'm happy to say. Um, and then there is an increase in the assistant position, again, that's the two point seven five plus a step increase um, in that position. And page one. The bottom of the page is, uh, the finance department. Are you still waiting on a number from?
From patients.
Yes, yes. To think of what, I'm like, what's their name we're using today? Um, do you, have you had any, um, information as what to expect thus far or no?
Um, no, I don't have any indication on their, increasing their software support price.
All right, the assistant business manager, I don't make sure that last field populated so we can see, but that again should be, um, the two point seven five plus a step increase for the assistant business manager. And the account analyst, same thing, uh, you'll see less in the payroll coordinator and that was a change of, um, personnel, so someone who's a top of staff onto someone lower on the step scale. In the selectmen, uh, department, you all know sadly we're losing, um, Kelsey. Uh, I have left the, um, budget the same to give us, uh, some. I have left the budget the same to give us some workroom as far as new staff. We had a decrease in dues to CROG by two hundred and ninety-seven dollars, and our CCM dues stayed flat. And the other items in that department, believing flat. And I guess something for us to think about. I think traditionally the webmaster stipend, it's a, it's a current employee, and we provide them a stipend to manage the website. Traditionally, that's been given the same two point seven five percent increase, so it's not a lot of dollars, but certainly something for us to talk about. Whether or not those stipends increase at the same rate as pay. So when, again, we're not talking about a full budget, keep that in mind, this is not, we don't see a complete number. But you can see with many items missing, we're definitely going to be at a starting point at well over ten percent. I will, for comparison's sake, show us what not taking the big increase in public works will look like compared to adding that in. And really giving that some, some, some serious consideration about how we want to attempt to move forward and make some progress on our infrastructure. Which I think is going to be necessary.
Yeah, to see, to see when all the numbers are in. Like, for example, putting that increase aside for a moment and seeing where the rest of the budget comes in gives us an idea of where the impact is.
Yeah.
Right? The, as, as Troy and I have wrestled with the conversations before, because his budget is the second biggest of the schools. It, it becomes sort of a fat juicy tartar.
Sure.
And he needs, he has needs, he potentially needs more, maybe a lot more. So I wouldn't, I mean, I'm not bringing this up because I think we can just get rid of that to make it even better. I'm just saying that, understanding the difference between what's in all of these lines and what's in the road increase will be important.
Exactly, and you, because you, because you might wanna fund it differently, you might wanna, you know.
Right.
You know, bond some of that out.
Or we might wanna start and take smaller steps, right? And I, I said to you, Troy, over the last three years, each year has asked for double his budget. So do we dial it back and start there for him to be able to make up some ground and see what we can do? But again, with the budget, even with the holes it has in, it went from a nine point five five percent increase to about eight point one two decrease. So you can see the effect of seven hundred thousand dollars on our, on our budget, for sure. So once all those numbers are in, it'll be a much clearer picture, so I'll give it to you both ways for us to, to talk about. I will say, and we have much more to talk about with public works, or you don't see it in here yet. I think we really need to talk about it and its impact, and I can put it in a version. Troy has asked for both a laborer and a mechanic every year, and he would like us to consider those again this year. So we can look at, to see what the impact on that would be, we make a balance in there. But I feel like I'm constantly asking him which, which would you rather see more? And I think it's a little Sophie's Choice forum, a mechanic or a laborer? And at this point.
The laborer would be full-time, but the mechanic would be part-time. You know, I think we've, town has spent some money on new vehicles and equipment that I think we need.
Which, which you have strongly recommended because it would limit the, the mechanic work.
Right, exactly.
Right.
And it takes away, can't, not one of our employees that does what he, as best as he can. But it also takes away from doing another project or where it is, where if you have another person as a mechanic in there, they can work on that. We can focus on working on the roads and doing stuff that way. I don't, like I said, a part-time mechanic, not a need for a full-time at the moment. I think something that can, we can look through the trucks, make sure everything's done, and we're doing the best we can now. Like, I'm not, nothing's gonna push aside, we have now site contractor we use. But still, I think it's something that's, you know, would be valuable to use. And we could even use him out plowing snow or doing something where there's a breakdown, he's still here, not the plow route, but park a lot or something where something happened. We're now pulling that off. We have a spare vehicle, so we can always, what do you mean, do, do you have spare vehicles?
Well, I hadn't realized that, I hadn't realized that.
You know, it's something that can be taken off, we, you have back-to-back storms where I have to bring somebody in to fix it or whatnot, I would think. You know, something maybe twenty-five, thirty hours would be a start.
Yeah, everywhere that I worked for state agencies and municipalities, we had, we had some sort of a mechanic that belonged to us for exactly that reason. And we often, if we brought the crew into plow, we brought the mechanic in also because something was gonna break. You know, a trip spring, a light's gonna get smashed out. Yeah.
And I think some of the benefit to the mechanic in, in our discussions, my discussions with other municipalities. The ability to diagnose what cannot be done in-house and should be sent out is beneficial. Again, we have a staff member who has the ability to do some lower level work, he is not a trained mechanic. And can do some oil changes and, and some other minor things. But at the same time, has a full-time job, right, and responsibilities, and.
Well, part of his job is to be that light duty mechanic.
It is, well, no, 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 that position doesn't exist.
Oh, that position wasn't filled, I'm sorry.
We couldn't find someone to fill that.
We got hung up on that whole circle.
So we do a little bit of the asking you to do a lesser paying job now, and so with that. With that particular staff member now, because he is a driver and has a full-time plow route, and I think snow time, right? When it's critical to have someone on the roads and a truck has gone down, he's the person we're pulling off the road.
Right.
So there's a little bit of a double impact, so again, another request. We, I'd like us to really give some healthy consideration to as we move forward in our budget discussions. But those are the only two things, the only things you don't see in here, and trying to go back and forth with the, if we can only put one in, what do we put? Do we put them both and hope for one, or, or be realistic and just put one request in? So let's have a full discussion about that as we see our, our next budget.
So did we get any guidance, communication from the Board of Finance on how we should be?
We did, did that go to the board?
There was a.
There was a letter.
There was a letter from a previous chairman of the Board of Finance, I heard, I heard the rumors.
I'm sorry, I thought that went to, so make sure you all get that. It was, there was no number in that, there was no number in that, it was be prepared to justify your increases. I let the former chairperson.
It was, it was very similar to the last, the previous year where it said. Any significant increases, you should be prepared to support and justify, and any changes in your programs or your staff. Your program delivery or your staffing should be explained as well, and that's very paraphrased of what the letter says.
Okay.
But there is some other stuff like, you know, we seek to be your partner in getting through this difficult process and, you know, that kind of stuff.
Letter stuff.
Letter stuff, but no, you know, in the past, we've seen, you know, we'd like you to be at one percent, we'd like to be, there was.
I'd like to see a copy of that letter.
Yes, I'll make sure, Kelsey will forward it to both of you, I apologize, thought you both received that. And so keeping that in mind, I think at least the former chairperson over there knows well. I come fully prepared to defend, defend, defend the extras that, that we ask for, so we will. Continue that, and so for us, right now, those significant increases outside of the cost of doing business would be if we were to add a position in public works. If we were to advocate for an increase in anything, anything above the two point seven five percent increase. And the additional dollars for infrastructure specifically at road, roads.
Yeah, looking at most of what's here, reviewing this packet tonight, most of the rest of this is pretty much holding.
Yeah, there's no, in this, except for the roads, there's no new program.
Well said.
Yeah. It's just, you know, I don't, seven percent increases on insurance, eight percent increases on our IT. We're seeing much larger increases on support across the board. And that goes with what we're seeing in our everyday life. So that's why we have some big things to think about, especially with the potential of a large funding project. And CIP, we hear the, Wednesday, we will hear the remaining requests coming out of CIP. That will be telling us to how different an approach they take. If it's not what was in line with what we anticipated in year two last year, if there's a cough or more or less.
Start working on the yellow box number.
Yes, yes, so that plays into, as you know, CIP plays into our number.
Sure.
So it will make our budget change as those adjustments, and we've just been hearing.
Because you pointed out, we don't have capital numbers in here.
She, well, Donna did put.
Well, right, we have the one, we have the ones that last year's CIP plan anticipated, but we don't have the newly tuned.
Right, right, it's just the anticipation, so that will be, I remember we haven't started playing with that spreadsheet, just hearing projects. Wednesday, potentially we'll start the discussions Friday for sure, we will start really taking a hard look at what, what we can do. And there are some large requests, I will tell you, there was an eleven point five million dollar request from both fire department. To bond for projects at both stations. How that plays out in year one remains to be seen, their eleven million dollar request is in year one. But knowing what I know about the bond process, correct here or wrong, we wouldn't be paying eleven point five million dollars on budget in year one. So it looks scarier than it really is. But lots of things to think about, so if you have any specific questions, please reach out to us and let us know. And hope to have a full package for your cruising on Monday. And we can get to work and dig in and see how we can get to a realistic increase class here.
Do we have any information on our grant list, how that's looking?
No, no, not yet.
Okay.
So we have, I have extended a two-week extension. So it may still be ready by the thirty-first, but we've, I've granted a two-week extension to the assessor. And that was so that she could do a lot of work with, without us being with an assessor for some time, and some things for her to look into. So she didn't believe she needed a month, we're allowed to grant up to one-month extension, she did not believe she needed that. So we're working on that two-week timeframe, so as soon as I have the numbers, you'll get the numbers. So.
And collection, as usual, has been running in good.
In good form, so Donna gave a report of where we were at as of the end of last month, Janice's collection, and that did not, does not include her current date. That's just what she's transferred, so current to date, Janice was at seventy-six, I believe it was seventy-six point six percent collection rate, and she has a ninety-nine percent budget. So on target, there's some.
Yeah, because we have the end of this month to wait for these, like, supplementals and all that stuff to come in and.
So the deadline before interest is next Wednesday, February first. A lot of those large banks come in towards the end, and I have, we haven't checked in today.
Eleven fifty-nine PM.
About that, yeah, so next Monday, I'll have a different number for you, but for sure, at our regular meeting on the sixth. We'll have where we ended February first, right, so the normal period, and then she'll work on collecting anything that's passed due at that point. But we are in good shape and we are on target.
I can verify I did my part for her, because I had supplementals.
Yes. All right. Seeing, anything else you'd like to discuss?
Thank you. Nothing at this time.
Nothing else on our agenda, I will move to adjourn at six thirty seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.